All right, 5 o'clock, Monday, August 20 of 2018. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, Mike Holden.
Here.
Tony Corby.
Here.
Terry Murray.
Here.
Roxanne Spokes-Tedich.
Here.
Elabar Jeffries. Michelle Hebner, here. Heather McBride.
Here.
Pat Sexton.
Here.
Kevin Grover.
Here.
Please stand for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Open forum, item one, public open forum. First person on open forum is Rachel Omdahl.
Can I just sit here and read?
Yeah, sure, that's fine. You can sit. Wherever you're comfortable.
There's like 10 of us in the room.
Should we shut the doors?
Yep, I'll get it here just.
Hello, my name is Rachel Omdahl, community education director here at ISD 361. I'm here today to clarify a few points that remained at the last school board meeting. I try to convince you that I am deserving of a pay raise that was presented to you last month. Out of the 63 Minnesota Community Education Association members who are community ed directors, 30 of those work in a district close to our size. There are four directors that make less than my current salary of $50,000 per year. The remaining make anywhere from $55,000 to $90,000 per year. On the handout you received, it lists the 8 through 12 population, district population, which ours should have read 6,000 people. Years of experience, benefits, staff members, level of education, salary, vacation, and safe days, along with other information that you might find helpful when comparing salaries. If you have questions, please feel free to ask me to explain the information list about that sheet because I know it is small and hard to read and there was a lot of information jam-packed into her page. I would like to clarify that I have worked for community education at ISD 361 from the fall of 2004 through today and received my community education director's license in 2006. And have been the director for this department for the past 12 years consecutively while holding a full-time art teaching position for five and a half of those years. I started out as the enrichment coordinator and was asked by Dr. Langen, the superintendent at the time, to go back to school and get my community ed director's license, which I did through the University of St. Thomas at my own expense. In March of 2017, I approached Superintendent Kevin Grover about taking a three-year leave of absence from my teaching job to work full-time instead of part-time for community ed, knowing that Barb, our secretary, was planning to retire. We switched positions after the year was over. He and I talked, as did he and Barb, about me taking on Barb's duties once she left and that we would not need to replace her. We also had a full discussion with my community ed advisory board about me taking, making the switch and what that would mean for me, my duties and pay. Please refer to the minutes received prior to today's meeting. My board was unanimously in favor of this happening and was approved by you at a meeting that April. They also made their recommendation to you at the last school board meeting to approve my raise. They were all in favor of the change. In March of 2017, I made it clear that if I were to come back full-time, I would need to make close to what I was making as a teacher and all were in agreement that that was doable. I returned to community ed under the premise that I was going to be paid for taking on Barb's duties after she retired. If you take a look at the community ed advisory minutes from April 3, 2017, you can read the discussion we had in that states. When Barb retires, it would add some funds that could be additional revenue to rectify the position financially along with adding community ed funds. Rachel would like to learn from Barb now about the secretary part of the position and then the last of wages, the last of wage adjustment would happen when Barb leaves. Under no circumstances would I have ever agreed to come back to community ed and take approximately a $20,000 pay cut for more than a year or two at most. That would be mindless and I don't know of anyone who would agree to make less money for doing more work for an extended period of time. If that were not the case, I would have stayed at my teaching job instead. I knew going into this that I could withstand to take a pay cut for a year or two until Barb left and I knew, and so did my council, my secretary, Mr. Grover, and others, that I did not ever agree to a $50,000 salary for the next 15 years or what have you until I retired. That was simply not the case. The secretary's salary was $18,000 and I consumed her duties except for scheduling the facilities and the census report this spring and I felt I handled the duties and expectations with ease in a timely and efficient manner. I took on the duties of making weekly deposits, data entry, completing forest day reports, answering phones and helping customers, sending out invoices, collecting fees from clients and instructors, mailings and schedules for the adults with disabilities program, and preschool screening duties, to name a few. I'm currently doing the coordinator job, the secretary job, and the community education director job, but not compensated for the work that three employees or site should previously. On the handout you were given, those salaries only reflect the community ed director salary, not a salary, or not a secretary or a coordinator. I'm not asking to be paid over and above what the previous secretary was making, I'm simply asking for a fair raise. The money was already accounted for in the community ed budget and it is not an added expense. I would like to point out a few facts. A community ed director, education director, requires a teaching degree and you need a license to be a director. I have a teaching degree, a master's degree in curriculum and instruction, and a community ed director's license. Teachers work 188 days per year at 7.17 hours per day, so roughly 10 to 350 minus their lunch rate, which gives you 1,347.96 hours per year. I was at a master's plus 10 or a step 7 rate when I was last teaching at a rate of $46.04 per hour or $62,057 per year. A new teacher coming in at step 1 would be making $35.13 per hour at $47,358 per year. I currently work at .95 FTE for a total of 1,976 hours. If you take those hours and multiply that by $46.04 per hour, I should really be getting paid $90,975 per year. Even at $35.13 per hour, which a new teacher would be making, one would be making $69,416 per year. My current salary is $50,000 per year and I am making $25.20 per hour, which is way lower than the majority of state community directors and staff here in our district. This is considered an administrator's position, which dual our pay to each year to hold this license. I feel I am underpaid regardless of whether or not I am taking on extra duties. Here are three examples to compare to besides the ones on the handout you received with the districts that are similar in size. Roylton has a K through 12 population of 1,000 students and their director gets paid $33.28 per hour or $69,222 or 260 contract days. Gainesville also has 1,000 students and 260 contract days at an hourly pay rate of $36.71 and a yearly salary of $76,360 per year. Melrose has 1,350 students with 220 contract days and gets paid $44.87 per hour and a yearly salary of $79,000 this year. All of these directors are collecting life and health benefits, which I am not. Clearly, if you look at the comparisons that I have given you on the handouts, you will see I am not getting paid fairly or the appropriate amount. I'm simply asking for a fair raise to compensate me for the work that I do as a community ed director, my years of experience, and compared to other similar directors throughout the state. If I were to go back to teaching, I would be costing the district approximately $15,500 in health benefits, which I currently do not take from the district, and I would be getting paid my teacher's salary of $62,057 per year, which is quite a joke from $50,000 that I am discussing with the district now. I do this job because I have a passion for it and I'm good at what I do. I have made many improvements to my department and have more class offerings than ever before. And that's where alone they offered 60 brand classes and I myself have had 68 classes that were not costing the district extra by having to hire an instructor from the community. I am actually saving you money and willing to continue to grow this department and be an asset to ISD 361. If I am not compensated fairly, I may have to pursue other options. Please consider these points when making your decision tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
I would wait till.
No, we have a point at the end while we have discussions, so.
As part of the discussion. Michelle, we forgot to approve, we left it up here to approve the agenda.
Why?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Kind of caught me, but.
Can we just?
Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second. Any discussions? Any changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, second one is Mark Thorpe.
I didn't do the compare or anything, but as a lot of you know, I have an autistic grandson who is non-verbal. I really feel this school district is missing out on classes for our non-verbal students. We should be teaching sign language. Everybody in the district could use it. My sister works TSA in the airports. It's amazing how many of our seniors have hearing problems. They have sign language people at the larger airports. You go into hotels, restaurants, I've seen waitresses, waiters, people in the hotels taking sign language to register for rooms and stuff. This is a universal language. It's not like German or English or Spanish, but you could use it anywhere. I think we really should be looking at teaching our kids sign language. We have a lot of kids in this district that even just have speech impediments. If they can sign this, they'd be better off. I really do think that just on a universal basis, sign language would really be beneficial to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Item one, approve past meeting minutes for the regular school board meeting of June 18 2018. Item two, approve current accounts payable due in the amount of $1,355,190. Item three, approve payroll in the amount of $189,511.91 for pay periods July 20 to August 17. Item four, adopt the FHS and FES student handbooks for 2018-2019 school year. Item five, approve hire of Lori Humbert at a .56 to 5 FTE as FES secretary effective August 20 2018. Item six, hire Ariana Cebriano as assistant girls swimming coach for the 2018-2019 season. Item seven, approve hire of Ariana Cebriano as a .7075 FTE type 01 licensed instructor for the 2018-2019 school year. Item eight, approve increase of .091 FTE to Tom Volum as licensed instructor for the 2018-2019 school year. Total FTE for 2018-2019 is .818. Item nine, approve hire of Charlie Anderson as annual director for the 2018-2019 school year. Item 10, approve hire of Rachel Omdahl as student council advisor for 2018-2019 school year. Item 11, accept resignation from Tracy Tealander per professional effective August 3, 2018. Item 12, approve hire of Kevin Borman as assistant cook effective 2018-2019. Item 13, accept verbal resignation from Wyatt Cassier per professional effective August 1, 2018. Item 14, approve hire of George McDonald as head boys hockey coach for 2018-2019 season. Item 15, approve hire of Chad Baldwin as assistant boys hockey coach for 2018-2019 season. Item 16, approve hire of Terry Thompson as assistant boys hockey coach for 2018-19 season. Item 17, approve hire of Amos McKenzie as head boys basketball coach for 2018-2018 season. Item 18, approve hire of Jay Boil as head girls basketball coach for the 2018-2018 season. Item 19, approve hire of Corey Miggins as assistant girls basketball coach for 2018-2018 season. Item 20, approve hire of Steve Johnson as head boys swimming coach for 2018-2018 season. Item 20, approve hire of Jerry Bolstead as head girls hockey coach for 2018-2018 season. Item 22, approve hire of Kevin Erickson as assistant girls hockey coach for the 2018-2018 season. Item 23, approve hire of Michelle McDonald as assistant girls hockey coach contingent upon having a JV girls hockey team for 2018-2018 season. Item 24, approve agreement with Rainy Lake Medical Center for therapy services effective 8/31 2018 to 8/30 2020. Item 25, approve management plan for lead and water. Item 26, approve proposal from Nelson Rudy and Associates for consulting engineering services for Bronco Arena HVAC improvements. Item 27, approve estimate and agreement with KGM Contractors for FES playground resurfacing project for $139,533.25. Item 28, approve collaborative services agreement with Kutaska Head Start and Early Head Start. Item 29, approve the 2018-2019 PSO and CEP agreements with RRCC. Item 30, first reading of school board policy 102, equal education opportunity. Item 31, first reading of school board policy 205, open meetings and closed meetings. Item 32, first reading of school board policy 206, public participation in school board meetings, complaints about persons at school board meetings, and data privacy considerations. Item 33, first reading of school board policy 401, equal employment opportunity. Item 34, first reading of school board policy 413, harassment and violence. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
I'll make that motion.
One second. Any discussion?
I can make a few comments. First of all, down on number 13, the resignation, I do have an email that came in today, so we do actually have a number that we haven't approved yet before. Number 23, just so you're aware, if you recall, not too long into the season last year, we ended up not fielding a girls hockey team. So there is an attachment in your document that kind of spells out, you know, if we run into that position, you shouldn't be having three coaches. You know, we're optimistic and moving forward, we should, should know if there's any co-op agreement here in a month with Lake of the Woods and stuff. But just put that so that if it would start out here and go, oh, we don't want it to go, not enough kids that were not stuck. You know, if she coached for two weeks, I guess my thought is.
You know, and we lost.
She'd be compensated on a daily wage for two weeks. So just so you're aware of that, I think that's good for us to do that. The number 26, Nelson Rudy for the engineering of the HVAC in the air exchange over there. Just so you're aware, we had two groups bid it. This is about half the cost of the other group. It is a group that has worked with Stevens who did our floor on the majority of their jobs, so they're very, they were actually up here and walked through it originally. If you recall, we got no bids on time. They had a bid, supposedly the person forgot to send it before he went on vacation. So I mean, they had been here, were vested, so very, very comfortable with them and so recommending that. 27, the playground, and I've talked with some of you about this. Local contractor, we awarded roughly $110,000 to do the paving over there prior to the summer. Unfortunately, after the fire in Superior, that's where they get their oil from, they've not been able to get oil at a reasonable cost for paving. And so they came, it's maybe been two weeks ago now, saying, we really can't do this without, you know, doubling the price. So got a good idea from a city administrator, Ken Anderson, and I sent him a thank you that he's invited to reach out to KGM, which is doing the city streets, doing the bridge up the lake and so on. So we reached out to them, they came and looked at it. Their grinder was about ready to leave town because they're finishing up majority of their stuff and gave us a price. It supposedly is the going price that they, they didn't jack it up. I mean, they, they work, they get a lot of their stuff from Bowman's. I don't know what it takes to all make tar, but that's where they get there. So Bowman is aware we're doing it, they're okay with it. They felt bad when, you know, they kept thinking they would find, you know, get access to cheaper. KGM told me they buy, bulk is one way they get it cheaper, they also pre, so they actually bought, even when the price is high now, they've already bought some for next year and then buy some the same year and try and keep their price. You know, you can win or lose at it, but try and keep it more stable. So anyway, for doing the parking lot, I reached out to a few of you to make sure I did because we had to go. You can see the price there. It's unfortunate, but it came down. And the other thing, and I mentioned to several of you, you know, we let the cement truck out on there, which did help things, it hurt things, knowing it was going to be redone. Safety, I don't think anyone can argue that that playground was a bad shoe. So I'm very happy that it's going to go forward. The other thing that I just wanted to touch on, because I don't, if you go back to number four, thinking I brought this up last month, we've had further discussion, you know, prior. We're approving the handbook, not phone numbers, and there's some minor details still be tweaking, but the one I come back to is the honor roll grad. We've had discussion on that and it's going to be printed again here, that we have to be set that we're okay where we're at. You know, if not, I'm just, if we're comfortable, it's going to stay as we've had. Now that we have to make the change and it, obviously, kids are back here in a couple weeks, it needs to be, I feel, not that it can't change down the road, but whatever we put out, we stick by it at least for a year until you do another handbook. And that's where we were this year, we stuck by right, wrong, or different. I support what's in there, telling me that upfront. So if we're okay, fine, we keep going. I just wanted, because that's been one that we kept to mark.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, moving on to action items, resolution, acceptance of gifts and donations. Resolution for acceptance of gifts and donations, whereas school board policy 706 establishes guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota statute 465.03 states that the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the school board of International Falls Public Schools ISD 361 accepts with appreciation following gifts, donations, or grants received by its school district. Donations received. Derek White Memorial for FES wishing will to the amount of $516. Item two, Yorca's FESPIS donation in the amount of $560. Could I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Roxanne.
Terry and Rox.
The only comment that I would make, very appreciative of the Derek White memorial is, give credit where credit is due, the Martinez family ran the dunk booth at 4th of July. And the only reason they can use that to become with insurance and make sure is if complete proceeds go to the school and they go refund them. And so they did it in conjunction as my, the hockey people maybe help out or whatever. And so it's a great addition and they'll go to help kids in need and work with the by group because they kind of run the wishing will piece. And so I'm very appreciative.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution adopted. Item two, community education discussion with possible action. Could I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any discussion?
Again, we're, you have a variety in hand as well as attached and we're back kind of where we left at Hain last month, looking at, I guess what I would say, what we feel the community ed position coordinator, position director, whatever you want to call it, is worth. And that's where we have to come back to. Again, some of the numbers are similar to what I threw at you, you know, I had a group listing, Rachel provided a variety more on a sheet, it's hard to read, or she took and prefaced it out of directors of schools, some similar, some bigger. Like I said, I made my recommendation last night, I'm not against putting more money in there, but again, it comes back to a, making sure community ed can, you know what I'm saying, long-term. There is a savings rate now of, I think it's $9,025, we have two hours of Barb's, we have the secretary over at the elementary that is still technically two hours community ed, that would add up to the $18,000 that you've heard. So there is $9,000, or I think it's $50 or whatever, $9,025, somewhere in that ballgame of savings rate now, or that's $9,025.20 if my math is correct. And like I say, that's where we're at. I mean, across the board, you can see there's a variety of things. It's like AD, it's like any position we talk about, no two schools are hardly the same. Again, I said this last month, I think we have a community ed department that does a lot and is very good. If we had a part-time person, and again, not going back when Rachel was part-time, we had more other people trying to pick up the slack, but there's examples of communities that, you know, are $10,000 to do a director and most of them don't have much community ed, and we don't want to go that direction. At least my, my opinion, I think our community ed does a lot for our community, which that's the purpose. But it's really coming back to what we feel we can do.
Kevin? I just really feel like, you know, I have gotten quite a bit of information on this and I feel like I, when, when I read the sentence and, and I know that we don't have to take any information from the community ed board, we don't have to follow it. However, it looks to me that last year, there was in the minutes, a statement, if you go halfway down this, April 3, 2017, where it said, "Then the last of wage adjustment would happen when Barb leaves." I have to say that I think that that was something, that we owe Rachel a wage adjustment because of that. Rachel, as I said at the last month's meeting, it's amazing that you have to have a higher requirement than a teacher requirement to be a community ed director, but that's nothing we can change, that is in legislation. But given that fact and given the fact that Rachel did go down by quite a bit in her salary, by $12,000, and then, even then, I read a letter by Rachel saying, "I will take the position for 2017 to 2018 for $50,000." And I said, okay, there, it's a done deal. But then when I read in these minutes that said, and my understanding was, and I know you don't remember, I think you said, but my understanding was that you approved these minutes for the April 3, 2017 meeting, it says, the part that, that sticks with me is, "Then the last of wage adjustment would happen when Barb leaves." I believe we owe her a wage adjustment.
I'll agree with that, it's in writing.
Okay, so I asked for the bylaws of the advisory council and I'm going to read what the responsibilities of the advisory council are per their articles of organization, I guess, it's not really called bylaws. One is recommending carryout policies and programs. Two, recommend expenditure budget to the school board and monitor expenditure of approved budget fund. Three, recommend potential community citizens to serve as members of the community education advisory council. Not give any direction on salary.
Oh, absolutely. It's just that if we would have been told that last year when we voted for a $50,000 salary, if we would have been told, just this one sentence, it's, it's a whole different thing you bring to the board if you say, "We're going to hire Rachel at $50,000," versus we say, "We're going to hire Rachel at $50,000 and then the last of wage adjustment would happen when Barb leaves." I voted on something that I didn't know that was set. That's my position on that.
And I do agree with her. I don't think that she would agree to take that much of a pay cut for an extended period of time. Nobody would do that. And then to have more duties piled on top of her already busy load, I believe she deserves an increase in pay. She's doing the work of three people.
So then we go back and. So then we go back and, do we go back and adjust the business office then? I feel it's fair to them, I mean, if we're giving up duties, we need to go back and make an adjustment to the business office then.
But did they have something in writing saying that they were going to get a pay increase at some point?
But this is, so this is minutes from their council meeting. So their council is not responsible for her wage, right? That's not part of their duty.
Absolutely. But it was a conversation between her and Kevin, and that's where it was an understanding. It says nothing to do with the council.
It's not, but it's also not, I mean, it's not, it's not binding.
I know, but if Kevin had brought that part, no offense against you, Kevin. You're a good leader, but if Kevin would have brought that to us, we would have had that info that we would have voted on, and it would have been complete information. I feel like it was lacking information.
And I will go back to when we left last, last month. To me, it's looking at the community ed director. What is that position worth? I mean, that's the question we're asking Rachel. We're just asking for an adjustment, looking at districts across the state. Is it the right?
So now we would do that?
Can you imagine trying to replace her right now, though?
But that's what I'm saying, let's look at it and figure out as a board what we feel. Take her out of the picture. If you were to hire someone right now, if we had to post for a position, what would the community ed director position full-time like it is?
With somebody with a master's with 12 years' experience?
That's what I'm saying, that's to me what we have to come to.
Well, they'd be asking for more if they had that much experience and years into it, and...
And that's, that's what we need to figure out, what that position is worth.
And last year, we knew probably the same amount of information in terms of how community ed looked last year versus this year. How, I would just say how awful it would look that we would decide to, if we were, to decide to cut part of a position at a time now when it says, and now we're going to change, it says in here, "Then the last of the wage adjustments would happen," and now we're going to look at cutting it? I just don't think it's right.
I'm saying, if we're looking at staffing a position that's technically .95 or whatever, if we had to post that today, you know, for a position, what would we put a salary? To me, that's the question. You know, what's that position worth? And that's, you have some examples there across the board. Again, no two districts are exactly the same. We have an excellent community ed department, I think we'll all agree on that, there's a lot going on. We need to look at what that position is worth.
No, that was put in here, though, in terms of it just says, "Then the last of the wage adjustments would happen when Barb leaves," because it didn't say, "And we should also look next year at what a position would look like. There may be changes in the position." It's just, the wording just isn't separate with me.
Well, so this is minutes, I mean, it's not, it's not transposed from that. So there may have been more conversation there that wasn't captured in this piece of paper.
Right, but there's nothing in there that says, "We're going to reevaluate the position at that time." There is something in there that says there's a wage adjustment.
And who types up these, who takes the minutes?
Our text minutes, and then before she printed those minutes, she went to Kevin and made, she had asked him, "Please approve these minutes or make any changes because I want to make sure this is the correct statement as to what was discussed at the meeting." And so then he...
I read through them at the time, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with that.
So, do you guys mind if I shed some light on, interject some common sense here? Kevin Grover represents the school board as a whole. So, anything he says, he does in good faith with the school board behind him. In this case, he, and I talked to people who attended this meeting, I will say that we should emphasize the importance of board members going to these meetings. I do understand stuff comes up for our subcommittees, in the same sense that we would expect for any of our subcommittees, that we are elected to these positions and we should attend these meetings unless otherwise, you know, extenuating circumstances like Tony's had a lot of extenuating circumstances for the board, and so we understand. I did look back at all the minutes that were before and after this in regards to the school board, and I would say that none of them accurately reflect what this says. So, I do believe, I agree she deserves a wage increase. I will say that some of the arguments on the opposite side, as far as saving money from it, and you can correct me on this one, saving money on instructors, the instructors get paid a percentage of the class, what they take in, is that correct? That's how it was when I was a...
They get paid hourly.
But the point is, just say Rachel offers a class tonight, we're not paying her more. That's part of her, where if...
I got like 75% or something like that.
No, it used to be like that, now it's just...
Okay, all right, so thanks for clarifying that.
But you see, like, if you taught a class, we're going to pay part of what we would take in where if Rachel...
So then that's not a big deal, that's irrelevant then.
And she's taught 68 classes.
I mean, my argument's irrelevant. No, my argument's irrelevant, is what I'm saying. What you're saying is fine. Okay, so, because I wasn't sure all that worked. The other thing is, as I spoke with somebody else today, a salary position, it's one of the downsides of being a salary position, Kevin can attest to that, is the more you work, the more you don't get paid, unfortunately, in a salary position. The thing that I'm held up on is the superintendent represented us at this meeting and said that a final wage adjustment is needed. Now, whether it's an advisory board or not, if Mike and I go to the rec department and we start making decisions for the school board, we're making decisions for the school board. It doesn't matter, you know, if we're at an advisory council or not. And that's not an advisory council, so it's a little different. But at that point, we represent the school board, and that's the whole point of these subcommittees. So, I think that she definitely deserves a wage increase. I think, I think that $9,000, if we start there, we are going to never hear the end of it for other arguments that have already come up, such as when Sue left. Some additional wages, people's hours increased, so they were able to work more. But those aren't salary people again, so we're not comparing complete apples and oranges here. We're like apples and bigger apples, I guess, I don't know, but they're similar. So I think what I would like to see is at least to cut that in half and do a $4,500 increase. I might be confused on the parliamentary procedures here, but I, we motioned to discuss this?
We need a motion.
Yeah, okay, all right, I thought that was a little strange. So, that would be, the motion that I would make would be to increase the recreation director's position.
Is there further discussion?
Sorry.
No one would take that.
Yeah, I know. Anyway, sorry about that, the community ed director, $4,500 annually, because I feel like something is warranted, and that's kind of where I feel where it should be at. Is the position worth significantly more, possibly with your experience and what's even required to be there? But similar to what Rox said, the legislation's stupid on that, to be honest with you, on how qualified you have to be to be a community ed director. I think you were probably doing just as good of a job before you got, you know, all that extra stuff. And it is unfortunate that you had to go through all of that. Again, that's not necessarily something that we can control. So that would be, my motion would be to increase the community ed director $4,500.
Shouldn't we have a motion to have discussion, so we continue?
No, I made the motion, so what has to happen is, we have to discuss on what I said.
Okay.
Otherwise, we can continue discussing.
All right.
All right.
So what do you need a second?
Do we want to finish discussing it, though, before we go ahead and make motions? I don't know that anybody, we didn't exactly finish discussing it.
Well, here's the thing, once it's seconded, it opens a backup for discussion.
I'd like more discussion.
Well, a person can make a motion at any time during discussion.
I'm seconding the motion.
If it's seconded, we continue, if not, we can still continue the discussion.
Yeah.
And that is...
So the discussion doesn't end? It ends on a specific $4,500, Rox seconded it, so it's specifically the $4,500 right now.
And so, discussion can...
Well, what if the rest of us feel that she is deserving of what she's asking for and what she was told she was going to get?
It's not the most sensible.
Then you vote it down.
So that's not true either. So what happens is, you make an amendment to my motion to increase the pay to what you want. And that's how would it vote, and you can amend it one time before you have to go back down to mine. If yours gets voted down, let's say you say $9,000, it gets voted down, then we're back to the $4,500. That's how board procedures are.
But I'd like more discussion yet before that.
Yeah, you can discuss all you want, around the $4,500.
Right. Okay, Rachel, she's doing an excellent job. When this came up, the $9,000, 19% raise, I looked at that and it was like, I've never heard of that before. So, for me, and I know you're doing a great job, but 19% raise is huge, okay? And what that position is worth, I'm not sure. I'm sure, I mean, it's a hard call, but I've seen so many times people get extra duties and they don't get any kind of compensation, you know?
And that doesn't bother me, I don't mind taking on the extra duties. I am an art worker, I put in plenty of hours on nights, weekends, summer, whatever. That's not really the issue.
I think we have to be careful that you're not, how you word that, Mike, only because 19% raise. If that were to go in the newspaper, I think a lot of people would get confused because it's not a 19% raise. She asked for what she thought, it said, "Then the last of the wage adjustment would happen." It's a wage adjustment from a agreement that happened last year. So please be careful that we don't call it a wage increase.
At our previous meeting, though, there was a dollar amount, which...
There was a dollar, okay, let's say $9,000.
Right, it's just the words wage increase, I don't think suit it.
Well, that's what it is, though.
I think that's what it is.
It is an adjustment to her wages.
That's going up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's what she was told was going to happen.
So, it's not like it's us against you, you're doing a great job. It's just that there's people that want to get compensated when they get extra duties. It happened to me in my position. I got voted up and, you know, didn't get compensated. The job description got bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger. So it's nothing against you, it's just for me, $9,000 just seems like a huge amount.
And it doesn't have to be the $9,000, I'm just asking for a fair amount compared to the other directors in Minnesota and my years of experience and the whole package that we talked about when we come back into this job. I'm not stuck on $9,000.
All I worry about is people coming in and after, let's say we give you, let's just say we did give you $9,000, people coming in and wanting to be compensated in their positions too, because they've got an increased lower. If everybody comes in and wants a raise, we're going to...
Well, I think she took this job on the understanding that this was going to go up. That's the only reason why she signed it.
But there was no set amount.
So let's say we deny this, and then she decides to go back to teaching. What happens to the art teacher that was hired? Then we're looking for a new community ed person. I mean, this is going to trickle as a domino effect. I mean, this has to be, we have to think forward here, not...
Yeah, you also got to think about the other people too, at the same time, that want compensation.
But they don't have a verbal contract that said they were going to make...
This is not a verbal contract, this is minutes from a meeting, this is not a binding contract in any way. And this should not have been discussed at this meeting, this is not part of the advisory council's duties.
But it's the truth, right?
Michelle is right about that, it shouldn't have been discussed at the advisory council meeting, and that's, I think, is unfortunate in itself. I think the other unfortunate thing is that it wasn't in your contract, expressly in your contract that it said this verbiage. However, it was discussed there, and it was discussed by the superintendent who represents the board.
I got a question to Kevin. What was your intention when you were at that meeting, you heard that stated? Did you remember that?
No, no, I remember the discussion, and to Rachel's, there was never that you would make $68,000 or $70,000. There was never a set amount, the idea that with Barb being in there, whether she was in there for a year, two years, three years, you know, we had no resignation at that time, that we couldn't support paying $60,000, $70,000, whatever it may be, plus what Barb was making, and financially, you know, keep the program where it's at. When Barb left, whenever that happened, that I think that those minutes, to an extent, there would be funds available that could be used, meaning there could be an adjustment. And like I said before, I, last month, I'm in favor of increasing something. Whether it's $3,000, $5,000, $9,000, that's up to us, and that's where I come back to what's this position worth? You know, what can we do? I mean, that's where it was, there was never, and I would bring the whole community ed board in, never something saying $18,000 will be added to this position. That was never, that would be in those minutes if that was said. I mean, that's, so, like I say, that was discussed, whether it should have been or shouldn't have been, is yet to be, you know, probably maybe shouldn't, but again, I go back, you know, if we're going from full-time to part-time, to part-time to full-time, is that part of that group? You know, to see the direction of the group to go or not, I guess at the time I felt it was. You know, just like if we were going to, you know, act, should we get any input from them or not? Probably should, but maybe keep the monetary piece out of it. You know, but I mean, you know, they do direct, you know, run that program. We keep hands off for the most part, with our members attending and being part of it.
Yeah, we ought to be, just, I'm just so nervous that, I heard a few people say that it was promised, or, and then the person wouldn't, she wouldn't do it, you wouldn't do it if you knew you weren't going to get the increase, and I heard a few things of that. I'm a little concerned that some people are basing this on because she was told by somebody she was going to get it. The only way I would go along with this is if we as a board decided that it's, should get a fair increase, and that's the only reason, not because it was ever promised. I'm concerned that we even consider that part of it, because then we're going to be, anytime one of us supposedly agree or say, "Yeah, you should have an increase," they could come to us and say, you know, so-and-so said it. Ted said, you know, he felt it should be.
It wasn't coming from a board member, though, I guess that's where I'm more...
What?
It wasn't coming from a board member, though. You know, I guess that's kind of where I was teetering with it.
Well, that'd be even more, like, that we should consider that.
A board member is one person, like...
I know, but no board member is even worse, for us to take that as a consideration.
And again, go back to, and can't say, the board is the only one that hires, fires, makes an increase. And I've told, I don't know how many different people, you know, don't resign the position you're in, or do, you know, take a leave. You know, if you went to approve that, you know, the original, it could have happened. You know what I'm saying, because, and I'm sure we had the discussion, I can't guarantee it is going to happen because this group here is the only one that does hire, fire, do increases. You know, it's just like negotiating. We can have an agreement with 510, Paris, 331, whoever, and it can fall through. You know, yeah, we negotiated in good faith, we thought we had an agreement, but as a whole, it fell apart. You know, and again, that's why it comes.
Right, but the only, again, I have to keep going back to the fact that...
And I just answered that, that's what Terry asked, and I just said, my recollection is, yeah, that the idea that when Barb left, there would be funds available, but there was never laid out. Correct me if I'm wrong, that you would get $18,000 or $9,000 or $6,000? Correct, otherwise that would be in there, so...
Can I just, I know this is kind of going off just for a second, but the two hours that this secretary at the elementary school is going to be there? How is that going to work? Like, she's not going to be in the community ed office at all, she'll be over there.
Okay, the idea behind that is to take, and Rachel, we had a discussion, is going to have her doing some community ed stuff. The other piece is we're having registration online as well as in both offices now. So technically, anytime those secretaries, you know, help a family in community ed, that is secretary at the time. The hope is that Rachel will use this person, whether it's being, you know, facilities, scheduling, beats, whatever. That person should be of access. Maybe a year down the road, we'll say, you know what? We don't need those two hours over there, I don't know, but to cut it all, to put it all on...
I was just wondering how it's going to work, if they're going to be on the phone all day with each other, or how did that?
But even if you, if you talk to Barb, once the person gets in, they just start the first day-to-day, there is stuff she did over there for community ed, there is stuff she did in this office, secretary. You know, you can do your job, I won't say anywhere, but you know what I'm saying, is the person gets comfortable. There may be times she does, you know, six hours of secretarial work, and there may be a day that she does three and a half hours of community ed. You know, I mean, preschool registration is...
So it doesn't... So, it doesn't have to be two hours every day where she's...
Well, we wanna monitor it and see, I mean, if the person gets it done, we have to reexamine. But pay preschool registration during that period, I suspect that person will, you know, drive that piece because that's where, you know, the majority is gonna happen.
Okay.
And that's, that's why I recommended leaving two hours per time, maybe to see how it goes. If Rachel doesn't use it, it's her own fault. You know, to a certain extent, if there's nothing to send over, I mean, if she's getting it all done and not putting in an immense amount of time, maybe we can relook at it and we don't need those two hours. Maybe she'll find out that, yeah, it's the best thing we did is, you know, the two hours because I really need to...
So, Kevin, if, just trying to look at this like you were saying, if you were hiring somebody for this position, doing what she asked, do you think that would be a salary you may recommend? Of course, you would, you would, you would, you would work with some of your staff to come with that. If you gave that increase that Ted's talking about, would that be a fair salary for that?
The tough part is just like looking at the data that's out here, you know, that she provided. And I, I mean, it's all over. Do I think fifty-four, fifty, or whatever, fifty-five hundred, whatever it is, is out of line? You can see a lot of examples that are higher slash in that volume. You know, there's a lot of extenuating pieces, you know, that...
You can make something, depending on what you're doing for yourself.
Is it out of line? I don't think so.
Okay.
I mean, can anyone argue? Look at the sheets, you know what I'm saying? And I'm just taking this one that's, it's swollen up a little more, just took the salary. It's coming off of this sheet here.
Yeah.
You know, you can look at populations and, I mean, just region matter to an extent, you know what I'm saying? But they range from forty-six thousand a load to possibly a hundred thousand one, but maybe that's on the low sheet, you know? And the ninety-plus thousand, so I, you know, fifty-four, fifty-five, sixty, sixty, I mean, none of them are touching, you know what I'm saying? It's not like...
But now of all of them, how many are getting all the insurance as well?
You'd have to go back to the sheet. And the tough thing, you know, even with family health, there's varieties on that. There are places that are that much better, there's places that have, just like teacher contracts, they go digging in and finding out what they're paying, what they're getting, you know, but there's no doubt anyone with insurance is costing money.
Right.
And most likely significant one. And again, the unfortunate part of an actual position is five years down the road, it could change. You know, I mean, it obviously can change positively. We get more programming, need more help, I mean, that can happen. Times get tough, we lose half our pop, you know, that same tech director, same business office, same admirers. If it's small enough to get a half-time superintendent's up. I mean, you know, that's the tough part of being at will, so just...
And there was some discussion at the last meeting as well on tying it to funding and participation and tuition.
I threw an idea out there that I said I don't have an example of, but it could definitely be looked at of trying to do, you know, some incentive, like in commissions. You know, that if we can increase programming, you know, over time, and...
Well, I think if you were to go back a couple of years and just look at the flyers that were coming out, they've almost doubled in size. There's, I mean, the proof is right here, really. I mean, everybody's learning something, there's something for everybody, she's always trying to pull something, you know, for everyone.
And, you know, and again, this is not, our revenue was down last year from the year before. I mean, we offered more, the whole biz, correct me if I'm wrong, that we get people back, we need to be taking more community head classes and it's something we're gonna have to work on and, you know, not saying you just double your price, I'm scared of...
Right. Well, here's sixteen, seventeen if you have a look at these.
You know...
Yeah, I did.
What's the length of her contract?
It's, it's not long, I mean, you do, just like any of our people, at will is, you know, it's ongoing unless you have an issue. I mean, you know, the business office, you decide, you know, typically every two years we, you know, decide if we're giving raises along with the other ones, but that will just keeps going unless you have issues or, you know, we run into some issue that we need to address.
I don't wanna sound like a broken record, but I, I guess if this board comes up with a compensation figure, I just, I just can't go with nine thousand, but I'm not sure what it should be, to be honest with you, but it's a hard call. I mean, Rachel's been doing a good job, great job. Like I say, it's got nothing to do with that. It's a matter of facing the other employees of the school district when they want something. And if we throw a high amount out there, I know there's gonna be other people gonna ask if they can have some compensation. That's just me. That's all I think. And I sit on the school board with the responsibility of finances and in the six years here, we've kept out of the mud and stuff. I call it the mud getting in bankruptcy or whatever. We're doing a good job. This board is doing an excellent job. And so, it makes it hard and especially knowing that you're doing a good job. I mean, it's just a tough deal, but it's what's facing this board, other members that are gonna want compensation. And that's, that's where somehow if we come to an agreement on a compensation, well, okay, as a board. Other than that, I just don't, I know it's not nine thousand for me, so...
Mike, I completely respect what you're saying. I just think that we need to take each situation one at a time. If other people come to us, it's, it's a different situation and we, we deal with that just one thing at a time. Like, I don't think we, we do have to worry about other people coming to us, being compensated for extra duties, but we'll deal with that when the time comes. I don't, I don't think the next meeting, we're gonna have twenty-five people standing out here asking for a raise. So, we'll just, we'll deal with that one thing at a time. I think right now, we need to decide what we feel is a good increase for her and move forward.
I do think that we need to be prepared for that, though, because I don't think it's fair for those other people that we piled on a whole lot of work, not just a couple hours. A lot of work to those other people. And just because they didn't have these paper that Kevin happened to be at that said, hey, well, you know, you might get some more money, you might not, that didn't come.
He didn't say might, he didn't say might or might not. And Kevin read those minutes.
But just because those other people don't have some sort of paper with writing on it that states something Kevin said about a wage, that they're not deserving of any sort of increase for the duties that they take on. I think that's the unfair portion because everybody has taken on a whole lot in the past year.
And I think, you know, just to, it's not an impetus in all the people. In fact, it just brings back the discussion, those of you that were part of the, I think it was the administrative salary committee that met with some of the business office people, we said we would come back and look at it. In fact, I think we said it, you know, sometime this summer. That's for the most part, the group, business office, is, you know, the teacher group, the parent group, five-ten.
It's all different.
None of those have an argument. They negotiate a contract, just like I negotiate, you know, a contract. The at-will are the ones that came, you recall, I believe, two people came and had a discussion and we, you know, said, let's continue down this road, we will reexamine down the road. It is true, they put in some more time, so they have got some additional compensation because there are really people work more. Your business manager, not the case salary. Those are the group, the people that really can come, now, can, these groups during negotiations come, they're can, but I think you have to define, take this out and, you know, I don't care what you do, you're not gonna be on the high side. Well, I shouldn't say, unless you do something really that I haven't heard, you're not gonna be on the high side of what other districts, you know, are doing. And again, just like I said last time, there are some districts that are doing the very low side and you won't see a flyer like that for the community head. They pretty much don't have it. And I mean, that's unfortunate, the community's among the good ones, so I can agree with what's said, but it's, it's a small group. And again, we have to uphold our promise. I was part of that committee that met with those people, we should come back to the table and see how things are going and decide if you wanna do anything or not. You don't have to.
And I think at any of those positions, the consolidation, as we've looked at before, it's not a one-for-one transfer. You don't just, okay, well, say I got rid of somebody, I'm just gonna hand that money over to somebody else. That's not typically how that works.
So, not to be a stickler, but we're not talking about that right now. We're talking about forty-five hundred dollars because that was the motion that was made. So, we're not talking about nine grand. So, we're not...
Oh, just part of the discussion on worrying about someone else.
So, the specific motion, I get that, but if we're following the parliamentary procedure, the specific motion that I meant was at forty-five hundred until somebody amends it. So, we should be talking about whether she deserves forty-five hundred or not. I kind of, since I'm not the board chair, I haven't interjected, but at this point, for point of information, that's what we currently are discussing because that was my motion, was to four, four forty-five hundred. Somebody wants to change it.
No, 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 but the discussion of other groups coming, I guess, that...
I think we're still, that's all discussion. We weren't necessarily...
I get that, but the words you just used were, if somebody left, it's not one-for-one. One-for-one is ninety-nine thousand something.
Right, and that's discussion. I didn't make a motion, I didn't amend the motion. That's discussion.
You didn't make a motion, but if you had, then we could discuss a different amount.
But it was just purely discussion.
I'm just following with the parliamentary procedures.
And I didn't amend the motion, I was just discussing.
Can we move on?
Well, the question is, is either, if there's, Michelle, if there's no further discussion, we vote on what's here and if we have more discussion?
And here's the full motion again. Was there more to it than just the dollar?
The motion is to amend the, I would say amend Rachel's salary, compensate for additional duties or whatever, however you wanna word it, to, to an additional forty-five hundred, which would be fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars annually. It was made by Ted, seconded by Rocks. Is that a fair...
Yep, that's accurate. Might not be worth the worry, but I get that.
All right, we have motion, seconded the table, any further discussion? Outgiver?
Aye.
Outpost? Let's see, moving on to reports. What's the page? Anybody have anything?
No.
Ken Eversen?
Our enrollment at high school are six-twelve is five-sixty-seven. We are up four from last month, we're down fifteen from last year this time. Teachers report back on Monday, August twenty-seventh, and then that night, we'll have sixth grade orientation here in cafeteria at five o'clock, and then the seventh grade and new student orientation in the gym at the same time. And then that'll be followed by new teacher, nine from five-thirty to seven-thirty for all students and parents in grade six through twelve. On Tuesday, August twenty-eighth, teachers will be receiving training from Learning Sciences International. And then on Wednesday, August twenty-ninth, we'll be attending a multi-district professional development in Virginia. Classes begin on Tuesday, September fourth, and student pictures are that first week on Thursday, September sixth, and that's for all students in grade six through twelve.
Thank you. Kim Gower?
First of all, and I'm just throwing it out, if you want it part of next month's meeting or not, I would like to do a walk-around between the two buildings, not spending a ton of time, but there's been a lot of work done between the last three months, four months, and I think it would behoove us to, and obviously, the floors will be a little scratched up, you know, a few weeks in or whatever, but other than just the normal maintenance, there have been locker project, there's been track project, there's stuff going on, obviously, arena, there's been painting, there's a ceiling project upstairs in both buildings, new computers. If you're open to it, and again, I guess we, you know, if someone can't stay, we put it at the end like the working session, but I think it would be good to take a hike around and just see everything. There's a lot, and again, I think a lot to be proud of. And again, kudos to everyone that's been involved. I don't, I don't, do we send the, does the board get that welcome back or not? Not, I can get you a copy. I said, oh, welcome back to all staff.
I got one.
Okay, and I don't know if it goes to you or not, but hats off where, a pat on the back where it goes to, the tech has been very busy, the custodial crew has been very busy as well as a lot of contractors. And for the most part, other than a little black tape, we haven't had major snake and even take a step further. The county's doing a project on our behalf, all frontier, that's gonna be very nice and again, preventing parking, you know, on this side and so on. So, I would like to add that unless there's some objection, don't do it, I'd rather see it on my own time.
Great idea.
I do have one question about that project out there. Are we gonna maintain that sidewalk or is it, I get it's not gonna be too much more work?
We maintained the sidewalk. The plan is that they will maintain and the, the city actually maintains and does the snow removal. It was a learning process to me. The city has a contract with county as well as the state to remove snow and do certain things, like on Highway seventy-one out here, the state, I think, goes down somewhere like snow removal between here and Super One, or maybe Super One may stop. Well, their state highway still continues on. The city has an agreement, somehow gets compensated by the state to do this snow removal the rest of the way. The same, I didn't realize this was a county street. There is a county sign, driven by it at any time, probably, but the city has an agreement to follow it and maintain. So, the plan is for them to as quick as they can to get the sidewalk cleared as well...
As well as you can in northern Minnesota.
Well, with the street, they understand it's gonna be, you know, if it's not clear till ten o'clock, that's probably not good. If it doesn't work, we'll have a conversation and see, not to step on any of the other unions, obviously, that's a piece that comes in. We have done snow removal on this sidewalk, which technically isn't, I guess, ours, it's, you know, for many years, so we will keep that, it's not gonna get, so I don't know if that, that answers...
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
If anyone's interested, I don't know if you guys get this, I don't know who all gets it, there's a phase three and four training. I believe everyone's down phase one and two. If you're not sure, get down three or four. You don't have to. Phase one and two are the only two required. If someone's interested, they're, they're not close. Maple Grove is, is the phase four of September fifteenth, September fourteen is phase three. So, not that you'd have to do both, but if someone's interested, I believe this, we can help get one or more registered if someone wants to. I did want to just pass on, we got a nice thank you from the Christian Motorcycle Grill that rented our facility, mainly outside, and use of bathrooms, and they did a little, in a little addition, minor donation more than what we, we charged them, but they're very happy with you allowing them to use their facility and so they wanted to say thank you. And I'm not sure if Tim mentioned it or not, but I would like to invite you all, if it works in your schedule, to the welcome back for staff on the twenty-seventh, it's Monday, the twenty-seventh. Coffee enrolls at eight o'clock and a little quick welcome back and, and don't feel like you have to stay, you know, all day or anything, but it is nice to see a few people. Obviously, if, if everyone was to show up, don't all sit together. You know, but, and everyone has, again, everyone has different schedules, but it is nice to see one, two, three people. Big staff appreciates that, so I think that's all I have, other than it's just getting crazy around here, crazy good. People are back in, the buildings are busy, and there's gonna be a few pickups with technology and different things, just like they always are, but let's get rolling and ready for another great year.
Can I add something? I, I've rode around town quite a bit, coffee landing, different places, and a lot of people have told me that they're really appreciative of all the work that's being done by this school board and the superintendent and all their employees, how many things and projects that are being done. You can see it out there visually. Some of it they don't see because they're not coming in right now to see the insides of the school. But the outside stuff, like the park lots and the Bronco Arena, refrigeration and all that kind, I'm just getting nothing but positive report about this whole process. So, I wanted to let the school board know that. Like I say, I can talk and I talk a lot and hear a lot. that. Um, like I say, I can talk, and I talk a lot, and hear a lot, and it's all been positive, so.
And I didn't need to leave, I just thought, you know, like the dugouts they're working on, there's projects I, I just listed some stuff.
Everywhere.
Not needing to leave anything out, painting of the gym, and there's all kinds of bathrooms over there, and all kinds, you know, more things than I was, so. Didn't need to be involved, so.
All right. Uh, Ella's not here. Mayor Reports?
Uh, so, for the rec department, Mike's gonna help me a little bit on this. Um, but we finalized the joint powers agreement for the second time. The city had some changes. They were, um, they didn't really change the, uh, the essence of the document. Um, so, Michael, fill you in on exactly what they-
Yeah, what it is, is the city wanted to add it to the joint powers agreement, the contract of the athletic director slash rec director, and they wanted it in there, and they wanted to be able to vote, to get that in there, into the joint powers agreement. And then after it's in there, it's in there that the rec commission and the school board can, uh, on a yearly basis, or the contract with that, um, go ahead and vote on it. And it doesn't mean the city has to vote on it every time, it's just to get it into the joint powers agreement, so.
Mike and I had some concerns about, um, that the city would be controlling a school employee, and, um, the way it's worded now, that is not the case. It has to do more with, like, signing up initially because of, we're changing the joint powers agreement. Um, so,
Was that, was that from one of the members that that came, or was that from the city council?
That was from the city, um, the city lawyers and Ken Anderson, I believe, recommended that.
You will see it next month. It's actually on the board table right now, on their, whenever their meeting today. Um, and I guess what I said is, since it's going on second, they might as well prove it before we do.
Yeah.
Um, so, you'll see it next month. We'll highlight the, the wording changes. I've seen it, I don't have an issue with it. In fact, I even look up, consider or something.
Yeah, will be thoughtful of, or something.
It's, it's, as far as I can tell, it's fine.
Well, what I was concerned about was that the city, in order to get through this contract thing every time, that the city would have to vote on it, and that's not the case. Um, they're in no way gonna be stopped in the contract between the rec commission and the school board. So, I was a little concerned at first, but we got it ironed out, and, so I have no problem with the way it is now. We had an attorney look at it, um, and went through it, so it should be good.
And that's it for that. And then there were some coaches hired, but it was just kind of business as usual besides that.
Any other mayor reports? Moving on to goal-setting, board and superintendent discussion for establishing goals.
You recall last time, we had, um, a discussion on looking at some goals, A, for myself, specifically. Um, the one we're working on, and we can have for you next month, is the MCA data, so embargo, we have, we've been working with it, August thirtieth, and I'm sure shortly after, it'll be, you know, whatever. But again, whatever we set for a QCOM goal, bring to the board, um, I, I think just has to be the first goal, you know, just like it is for principals, just like it is for the teaching staff. So that would be number one, is what we talked about. Um, number two, and not that, um, I mentioned last time, LSI, in order for, um, Learning Sciences International, the LSI program, which we're diving into, um, the teachers for this next year. Um, we have our first training on Tuesday. For that to be successful, needs to be, um, I don't wanna say first or foremost, but it needs to be taken on by administration, as well as myself including. Um, and we need to be part of it. And so, I see that as, at least from my standpoint, the second goal. Um, the tough part is, you don't know what it all truly encompasses, other than I know we have three trainings, I know they do, all these varieties where we do walkthroughs throughout the building. Usually, it's a half-day, like in this building, correct me if I'm wrong, till half-day in the elementary, um, which, that includes me in part of it. Um, there's administrative training, which they'll meet with us and kind of push us on what we need to be doing in here with our staff in between training. So, um, I don't know how to write that, you, you know, obviously, if we have, I'm just throwing it out, an emergency in the building, obviously, or, you know, in the district, not saying we can't, but for the most part, it's gonna be in the calendar, and most days you participate with, um, administration events, or in whatever capacity that I need. Um, I think, um, I think if I recall, when we went down to, um, uh, Masabi East, I think their principal or superintendent, one of them said, it was all or part of nineteen days the last year. That's a lot of time. And, and again, it's not nineteen full days, but it could be different parts of the day, whether it was a two-hour team, administrative team training that they did with us, whether it is a full-day training, like on Tues-, Tuesday of the first week, or if it's a half-day. So, um, I see that as being, you know, and I will keep going, informed of how things are going. Um, but the plan is to do as much as we can with, with that, and support it, and make, make sure that's where we want to keep, keep going. Um, from there, that's kind of where, if you recall last month, we, I'm open to some discussion on where to go. Um, you know, I, I have an idea or two of my own, but I'm open to, you know, what the board sees.
Um, Kevin, again, I would like to emphasize that I would love to see a goal, a formal goal. Uh, you had it in formal one last year, observing the students that are exempted from the state standards. I believe that the board, or that you spend a lot of time reviewing a lot of, um, programming, educational programming, for students who are required to meet certain standards. But I really wish that you would take that one hour a month to observe in special ed once a month, because of, of the students that are exempted from the educational standards, not the special ed students that are still under educational standards. I would just request that you do that as a formal goal, because I, I really believe that we want our leaders to know about our special ed students who are exempted.
I mean, it's kind of up to, I, I mean, we don't take action on what the goal, but you're all gonna evaluate, we, you know, um, how would you say, six months from now, and then, you know, a year from now, roughly. So it is, I'm gonna say our goal, so to speak, just like I sit down, when I sit down with Tim and Missy, we have dialogue, you know, and figure out, they usually have ideas what they want work on, there can be pieces that I want work on as well, you know. And so that's, that's what we're here for, is you as a whole, not against that, that's what the board wants me to do for one of my goals.
And the, the only measurement that I would, because I know it has to be measured, but I know a lot about measurement, and I really think the only measurement you'd have to have is that you did an observation for an hour once a month.
And then what do you want him to bring back?
He, Kevin wrote, uh, just a little, little summary of what he learned, and, um, what he saw. I mean, Kevin, I think you're learning all the time, and, and you are very knowledgeable all the time, but I just, I asked that he bring back, or that he gave me a little summary of what he learned. And, of course, it's the beginning of the step of learning about exempted special ed students. So I don't expect you to go, I learned this, this, and this, and this. But I just really liked what you wrote, and I would bet, if you do it more often, I think you'd learn some more things. I think there'd be more things, I'm not real Sunday.
We've written up a special ed student. You know, and again, I mean, all the administrators are, you know, from time to time, working, and, yeah, or all of them, just like teachers are, you know, if they want kids like it or not, if that-
You know, one thing, um, the, uh, the test scores, I think it stinks on how we do it because of the timing. I think the test scores need to be in there too. So I don't know what the rules are on for moving that, um, moving the evaluation possibly. Um, don't know if that's allowed, so I won't talk too much more about that. But, uh, LSI, I really like to go all in on, on that from a school board standpoint, and, um, since we've invested quite a bit of money on that, and I really think it's gonna transform the way that the school educates. I have a lot of high hopes, uh, for it. And so, the problem that I have with the LSI goal is, the obvious goal is successful implementation, um, but we haven't, you've gone through some of, not the training, but you've gone, yeah, you've gone and seen some of the other stuff. So, the measurable part is kind of where I would, I would struggle with, how do we do that, um, other, besides successful implementation?
And all I can, I, I guess the only thing I can come up with is, I can keep track of what I should have attended and been at, and what I truly did. Because like I say, we're, we're looking at all that on the calendar, because we have to be involved, unless, like I said, we have a bus accident, or, you know, something happened. Other than that, we're gonna be, you know, be in.
So maybe successful implementation is enough, then?
Well, even at that, we can review it again mid-year to see, you know, what my idea-
See, what I'm gonna report back is we've had at least twelve days, or fifteen days, or whatever it is, and I participated in eleven out of the twelve, or, you, you know what I'm saying? Give you in a sense an attendance, after we've maybe been through it a year, there are continuing things going down the road. Hopefully, we'll have a better way, you, you know, better idea, um, of, you know, what the program's like, and maybe you can have more specific of a, you know, um, goal, just like with, with administration. We, we're well aware that the two buildings could be in different spots as we go through this. Sometimes things go quicker in one place, that we can start looking at goals once we've gotten in and kind of know where, you know, one thing's going, and, you know, maybe we're lagging behind, you know, in this building compared to that building, or maybe it goes a little different direction in one building, you know. But at least, once you're in it, we'll get a feeling of where we can go maybe more directionally as far as goal ones. So, I'm all, all on board for that.
Um, I guess to add to your goal, Rocks, I, I appreciate it, and I, I want Kevin to do that, but do we wanna narrow it down to just that, or do we wanna have it be where we include some of the other special interest groups, and not just narrow it down to one population? I guess is my, my concern for, like, one specific goal in, in one narrow population. I believe we should include, like, if he's gonna go and observe that particular population, it's, okay, well then, go and observe maybe over at the alternative center for an hour, or maybe find a, a gifted classroom to, you know, if you have gifted students somewhere you wanna observe, or, I mean, there's a lot of different small populations that we have that I think could benefit from that sort of attention.
Yeah, and the only thing I want to emphasize is the exempted. I don't know, what's alternative learning, are they exempted from state standards? See, that's the difference.
But it's a, but it's a situation, right? Unless he probably makes a point of going over there just because it's not all the time, you know, so it's just-
I rarely, unless there's a reason.
Right, yeah. So I think there's a lot of situations where something like that could be beneficial.
Because there's Indian Ed room, you could say, I mean, as far as that goes, you know, the, the, most of the teachers, unless they are, the, the new teachers, those are the rooms for the most part we get into, because by law, we have to do observations, and I help with those. Do I get into some others here and there? Yeah, maybe I have a reason, but, um, I mean, it would not be a, you know, obviously, if time was not an issue, it would be a great thing to be out in every room numerous times throughout the year. Part of LSI, we will get to start seeing, and that's gonna be a variety of different rooms as we do these walkthroughs. Um, and it's one of the, I think, very positive pieces of this program. Um, I said, I, I'm open to whatever, like I said, to your guys, and it's my goals, but it's your goals.
Well, I think, I think the special groups are a good idea, but I think we also need to make it a little more broad, include, you know, other groups along the way. If you go and do that one a couple times, then you go and do, you know, some other groups, and we can decide what those are later on. But so that would be, you just said, like, hour a month, like the one observation a month, was kind of the, so. I think that's maybe reasonable.
I think those are both good ideas.
Yeah, I wanna add that.
The, uh, other goal that we had last time was, um, community involvement, and it was, it was tough because you were so community involved, right? So, the, if we, if, because, I mean, it was tough because you did such a good job, like, you always got the highest remarks.
I mentioned last time, I, I think, there's no, you know, that's been on a few years, you think, doesn't mean I'm gonna stop.
So that's what I was gonna, that's what I was gonna talk-
That's part of who Kevin is.
Yeah, so, um-
I guess if it ever declines to an unacceptable point.
We can toss it back up.
No, no.
No, no, I'm just saying.
We just keep doing what you're doing.
You're very involved, so.
Very involved in the community.
If you, if you always, I was just thinking, if you always got such high remarks, then there's not much, and you don't have any much room for improvement on that one, because you only have so much time. I don't think, uh, like Stacy and Stacy's, you need to be more involved than you are.
My biggest thing, like, of course, well, for a while, is like the communication piece, like, just trying to connect everybody. Everybody does this, you know, and a lot of us don't know. One way I thought, like, a connection piece could be is if, like, if we did a motivational Monday, where you sent out just a good morning quote of the week or whatever, and then everybody would read it, kitchen staff, janitors, everybody, and then get the kids talking about it, kind of pick it apart during the week. And then, no matter who you see in the hallway, you know, Thursday, Friday, you could be talking about those things, and kind of just getting to know people, and, I don't know, I just, it's such a small thing, but you can make such a big difference in some people's lives.
So you wanna quote of the week every week, is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, like, if it's just like a motivational Monday, like, today's the-
How about increased communication?
Yeah, but I mean, it was just like a-
Well, no, I just, I want to-
Just tying everybody together, you know?
That's, so that's an, that's an example.
Right.
That's just an example.
Right.
But I guess, from my standpoint, I want it set out, if you want one thing every Monday, 'cause I'm gonna start working on it, and get it ready, because otherwise, increased communication, that really leaves you up in the air. You know, we have to be careful how we communicate as, you know, board and things like that. So I mean, if it's the expectation that there's one thing, an inspirational quote, I'll send it. You know, if that's what you're looking for, I'll explain to the staff what it's for.
For me, as a parent, it's nice to have, like, I mean, with the Rumble Pride tickets for a while. That was our first conversation at dinner, so I knew what was going on in school with something where any parent could find that note, like, if it was on our website or whatever.
Maybe you should have a secret handshake with each student. Could you do that for us, please?
Another example.
Shake everyone's hand as they enter the building.
But the, you know, other than just, I'll, I'll be honest with you, other than being just an inspirational quote or whatever, there's times I know what's going on in this building, there's times I know what's going on in the elementary, there's times I don't. You know what I'm saying? Because I'm, just like yourself, in a separate mood. Obviously, if there's a issue going on, and probably in the mood. Um, but, you know, if it has to do with PBIS, I may or may not know what's going on, you know.
I guess that's where I was gonna kind of go with that, because that one meeting that I went to, we had a lot of discussion on the PBIS program, and, you know, the later implementation, but then, you know, more focus was gonna be put towards LSI. Is there something that we still need to focus on, on PBIS, that you could work on?
And they're working, well, I guess from a, a building, both buildings are still going forward. There's the high school, they've kind of adjusted the way, um, people are placed on teams for this upcoming year, to get ones that are more interested in PBIS, specifically on most organized, not that everyone is gonna be, um, involved with, you know, the tasks of it and such. Um, but my point being is, typically, I'm not going and attending PBIS meetings here, over there, or even their staff meetings. If there's something I need to address, we will. Starting out this year, I'm gonna be attending quite a few meetings here, um, you, you know, for various reasons. Um, won't be at the elementary.
No.
Um, you, you know, and so, I, I guess I need a little direction. I'm not against doing, you know, if it's a communication piece, that's put in, you know, whatever, a monthly letter home, whatever.
I think that maybe that would be a little, something, maybe a little-
But again, keep in mind, if we're gonna do something, we gotta do it, you know.
Kevin, do you get much time, interaction with the students? I mean, you're always just, whoo, going. I mean, do you ever get to be out in the hallway and ever get to hand out-
I'll be honest.
Tickets and-
What happens when we get busy? I mean, realistic, you, you know, you get busy, and certain things you do, and you don't, you don't get out into the classroom any more than time allows, unless you have to, so to speak. And, and when I say have to, that's not a bad have to, you know. The mornings, as much as I hate it, you know, I think only happened once last year, the year before, it was numerous more times, I'd ride the bus no more. It's a great experience. I'm not gonna say it doesn't interrupt a f- I'm not gonna say it doesn't interrupt a family life and things like that when you have to be on a bus at six, but it's a great experience when it happens. I'm not saying I'm asking for it to happen. You see what I'm getting at? The same thing is there's times, okay, most of the time it's if Tim was at the ALC and Mark was involved with something, then you have to go interact with a student, it was because there was a need for it or something was going on in.
I mean, like pause.
No, I know, and I'm just being honest, that's about the time, times you get out.
Okay.
How often do I get to go and stand down here during lunch for a half an hour? And again, there is a place for that. That's why, you know what, having Mark or staff out here during, it seems like you're just standing around, what a waste of time. It creates less issues during lunch or after school if people are out, you know, out and about. So cut to the chase, not very often. Very, I mean, I walk down, maybe talk to Bill Mays, hey, you running, hey, how's it going, are you running? But it's just when you're out and about, same thing at the elementary. Yeah, well, every time you go over there, you get, hey, how's it going? You know, and you run into a teacher in their class or whatever, um, don't get over the problem, especially, you know, before school, it'd be easier example to go on through the halls and wish everyone, you know, a good day, but unless, unless you make a point of it. In fact, we're going back and this is the one I put down just because it's lax, um, have administrative meetings where the first year, and I'm not saying it worked out every month, but we used to have it set and tried, someone got pulled, whatever, but what happens is you get busy. You know, and now we, we taught me, Tim, Stacy, Missy, whatever, what we used to, first started, once a month, get together, you know, and there was a month, I'm sure it didn't work because of whatever reason, but, and so we're gonna try to get this year, get it set on the calendar unless something, because it is good for us all to get in, it does not have to be a four-hour session, but get together and what are the burning, you know, issues, whether it's, you know, with all of us, we used to have a score at the time of tech, we had maintenance person in, you know, and you'd hit on items that pertain to all of us, so to speak. But what happens when you get busy is things come apart again, you know, and as more things get put on everyone's plate, it's harder to get people, you know what I'm saying?
We don't wanna put more on your.
No, but that's, I mean, that's just, that's what it matters.
Yeah.
You know, and it's no different that, you know, most of the time last year when I did my little sit-in or whatever, most of the time I gave them a heads up because it wasn't for the teacher, you know, I wanted to make sure that the student was in, doesn't matter what room, but when I went to the pool, the teacher knew I was coming, you know, and the same, because if there was something going on, because it does, it does change things and Rox knows this, when different people come into the room and, you know, again, be careful how much you do that too, but I'm not against, like you say, I, I'm fine as long as the group agrees. I mean, I think it'd be good to get out, whether it's spending an hour in a special ed room, variety of rooms, you know, here as well as elementary, whether it's an hour in ALC, whether it's an hour in UJ, you know, some of the places that, whether it's an hour standing out here during lunch. I mean, I mean.
I think probably lack would just be folded in to that goal, 'cause it's kind of, it's fluid, you know? I mean, you, you could involve different things in that particular goal of one hour. So I think you could encompass a lot of things with that particular goal.
I think, um, that, and as long as, I mean, there's no motion on the specific goals, we can discuss them next time too. But I, I like the idea of what Rox said and I like what you said, Michelle. The question would be, um, I would, you know, which groups are also included? So I would be, I'd be interested in maybe exploring that some more over the next month on what groups he needs to visit or.
Well, I guess that could be something we, we develop, I mean, he could develop a list, we could develop a list, come together and.
But my, my, the one fear I would have is, is, um, if we say, well, he has to do an hour, and I know this isn't what you meant, but if he has to do an hour a month, um, with special ed, then he has to do an hour a month at ALC and then an hour a month here and there, and we keep on adding up these hours, he's not gonna.
No, just one hour.
Yeah, and as, I know that's what you meant. I was just clarifying, um, that I wouldn't want it to be one hour for this, one hour for that, then, um, because I, he would do it, but then some of the other stuff would lapse or he'd have even more time after that he'd be here trying to catch up, so.
You know, somewhat similar, a little different, you know, at school. I worked as a director of public health and human services. I know you can't a certain day go to a certain place just to be, be there, like one hour a month, for instance. Whenever I could, I'd go to a, whether it's a self-meeting where the kids are working with the foster kids and so forth. I picked and chose when I, something was going on or I had time just to be visible to staff and programming, out of town, in town. But it's different for every group you meet with. You know, I don't know how, no one could ever have directed me how to do that. I would, all you could ever do is just say, you know, I hope you're doing that, 'cause there is.
Well, but the way it worked last year, and I mean, you go back, I'd put it on my calendar and there's times it changes, you know, something happened and now it was going 9:30 to 10:30 because I knew they were gonna be, yeah, it can change, but I mean, I, I had the, how would you say, liberty of picking when to go. I also would ask the teacher, you know, what's going on, is this time gonna work? Yeah, you know, and trying to plan it, because same thing, you know, just like if it's whatever group it is, um, I don't wanna go in, I mean, be more of a distraction than, you know, I mean, and not that they can say no, but I mean, I don't, just pick ALC, you know, if they were doing some big test, I don't wanna show up there and just, you know, that's not the time. So it's, you know, is there anything major maybe going on or would it be okay, okay to come, you know, Tuesday afternoon? I feel, to me, that's the only way, like I said, we would be able to drop in at any time. But I'm thinking educationally, if they're doing something, same thing, if, oh, JIB, I don't wanna go in there and watch them kick a test. I mean, that's not the purpose, you know, it's to go in and hopefully interact and do some, you know, something that would be a good experience to partake in, you know, 'cause it's not, from my standpoint, it's not so much to go, it's not to watch the teacher, not that you don't get some of that, it's to watch the interaction of the kids, knowing from the kids, you know, that's the way I see it, is in the special ed, yeah, you take in what the teacher doing and what activities are going on and, you know, the interaction of the kids, you know, you take them in a whole situation, but you wanna make sure it's appropriate, you know, if they're even with a parent, I, you know, it's not a time to go, you know, observe that kid and, so. I can come up with a list if.
Well, do we need a list? I mean, are you just gonna develop the wording? I mean, if I make a motion that your first goal is MCA related, the second one is LSI related, and the third one would be the one hour per month specialty group observation, or we want a word.
I will bring some wording back next time. There is no improvement, it's just, you know, unless you wanna make it that way where, I mean, we just come to an agreement at some point here.
Bring it back next month.
I'll bring it, and obviously I can start working on all three as we speak, that's the biggest piece that.
QCOM's on, right? Yeah.
Yeah, it's going, like I say, we're, um, in the process of analyzing the goals right now. The data will be out publicly on the 30th, so we can report back to where, where we're at and, and start working on, we met this morning with the QOC group, um, to work on maybe a goal set for next year, October 1st, so it'll be on September's board agenda to bring a goal.
Okay.
East schools, goals of this year, so I don't wanna make comment where we're at.
Sure.
But it is out.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn at 6:59. Were in the discussion?
One second, sorry, Derek.
Oh, Heather seconded.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, okay.